Like we had either.
No, all right, so in today's afternoon, Mr. Bob. All right, we are going to do, we are going to come out of the next however many minutes with three strategic priorities to focus on for fiscal year 25. Right, that is the goal. Keep your eye on the ball, people. All right, so there's going to have two separate sets of votes. All right. The first one is going to be a little bit of a pie chart because that's how it's fitting right now. So these are the 12 new things everyone wanted to enter. If everyone logs into their mentee and hang on, Mr. Harris, I'm going to grab my phone and you can vote with me. I need everyone to rank these the way you ranked the last one. All right, so does anyone need help logging in? These are the new priorities. It's just everyone hit refresh. These are ranking dash new priorities. It should look like this. Hit refresh.
These are now new priorities. List if you need them up here as a cheat sheet or all over there. So this is new priorities. We're going to talk to me from these.
All right, Mr. Harris. Do you have, do you want to read out to me what your rankings are?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Number one is council collective thinking.
Okay, hold on, just slow down because there's so many of them. It's going to take me a hot minute. Okay, what's number two?
Number two is the adjusting city director's residency policy.
Okay. Number three?
Financial transparency.
Okay, number four?
Economic development.
That's not on the list.
That's not on the list. That was on the old list. Okay, let's talk about the environment.
Okay, environment. Okay, next.
Okay. Increasing in marketing and communication funding.
Okay.
Determination and introduction of new revenue sources.
Okay.
Technology.
Okay.
Recalling fees.
Yeah, recalling fees is the liquidating that Ms. Gore had that I made bigger. Remember? Okay, go ahead.
Well-trained municipal employees.
Okay.
And did I say branding?
Nope.
Branding.
Okay, you still have two more. Integration with schools and public outreach.
Public outreach in schools.
Okay, that's it. You good? All right. Submitted. Ms. Denton, do you need help? Are you still out there? You're going to have to come closer. I can't hear a darn thing.
Hear me?
Uh, now I can't. You log in. Yes, but hang on.
Okay. Number two?
Wait, hold on.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, um. Technology.
Okay, technology first?
No. Frame municipal employees first.
Okay, and then two is technology. What's three?
Then yeah, then third is determination and introduction of new revenue sources.
Yes, what's four?
Financial transparency.
Five?
Integration with schools.
Six?
Can we do determination of introduction of new revenue sources?
We did that already.
Okay, environment.
Okay, seven?
Brian didn't.
Okay, eight. We've got council collective thinking, marketing, public outreach, adjusting directors residency policy and recalling.
Okay, increase in marketing. Okay, then adjusting city directors.
Okay, now you've got council collective thinking, public outreach, are we calling?
Um. Council collective thinking. Public outreach. That's the last one?
Yeah, that's about making sure we're collecting all the fees and not letting people go.
Okay.
All right, all good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, submitting. All right, that's everyone, right? Yeah, no, that's back to Sydney ones and I need the girl right now.
Um, guys, can I? Take some. Can I take a little bit of? Whatever, it's really acts of will and consent. Fiscal health and fiscal transparency are so aligned and there are topless. Can I combine them with one? Thank you. Let's just move the next slide on down. Going really fast and never try to run stuff. Hold on.
All right, guys, I have now combined. I trip on myself. The top three, which ended up being the top four, only because I combined fiscal transparency with something else. And we've got one more vote and then we're done voting for a little while. So what we need to do is rank these and mind you, the top ones of these are going to be our top priorities for 2025. Yep. All right, Mr. Harris, you first.
Economic development is first.
Okay.
Fiscal health and transparency is second.
Uh huh.
Public safety is third.
Okay, let's keep ranking so we can rank them all.
Okay. Fourth is determination of new revenue sources.
Okay.
Vitamin is fifth. And well-trained municipal employees is six.
All right, Ms. Denton, you're next.
Okay, number one is fiscal health and transparency. Number two would be well-trained municipal employees. Three. Public safety. Four, economic development. Five. Determination of new resources. And then six. Environment adding to infrastructure.
Still waiting on people. We're still in front of the guys. Two here who are still.
Those are the, all of those are all the ranked priorities, the top three and the top three. So right now, unless everything changes, oh, I'm going to shut up because things are changing. So yeah, once it says six, we've got everyone because we're missing Holloway. So someone's still voted.
Is there any way we can get determination of new revenue? In one of the top three?
Well, what we can do is we. I don't know who's voting next, but whoever that is, you know, who's still voting, they can potentially move that around. I actually, we can have a discussion, guys. We did a ranking for a reason. So if we want to consolidate, oh, there it is. Okay, so the top three right now, and we can talk about whether or not we want to do some consolidation or not. But right now, here is the ranking with everyone's votes in. Number one, fiscal health and transparency. Two, economic development. Three, determination of new revenue sources. Four, public safety. Five, environment. And six, well-trained municipal employees. Now, we could potentially have a discussion about whether or not we combine determination of revenue sources with fiscal health and transparency and include public safety. Because fiscal health and transparency and budgeting should be theoretically about adding revenue sources, but I don't. Well, we're just two voices. I want to take a leave. Does anyone have a problem with that?
No.
That way we can kind of geek in public safety, which I think is a huge issue. Okay, so. What?
I mean, do the politics.
All right, so can we just do a yay or nay, just because to make life easier? Who would like to add fiscal health and determination of revenue sources combined? Show of hand slash I. All right, you got four here, which is already quorum, but let's take the vote for fun. Mr. Harris, what say you? Ms. Denton?
I'm okay with that.
All right.
Well-trained.
I think there's a good section on that after this. And I'm not necessarily sure that that would be a 25 priority because I'm going to talk to you about trying to tackle it in 24.
Well, but we're asking. That they give one to do that.
Yeah, I think it's, I agree with that. Now, we are trying to consolidate.
I would just. Yeah, I mean. Face it now, but it's.
I mean, at the end of the day, I agree with you because there's nothing without accountability in training and operability, like, you know, Russ can't do his job. People aren't actively entering things correctly into MUNIS. And we're going to have a whole long conversation about accountability and leadership this afternoon as well until we feed into this. I will say that we took a ranking of all of them for a reason, right? So we know what our top three are. And so I don't see any reason to remove five and six, right? Because now it's the four become the top three. So I think what you wanted to do, if I'm correct, and I don't want to speak for you, is you wanted to have another advance and then fully blow out the plan, right?
Correct.
So this would feed that.
Yes.
I agree with you. No one's disagreeing. I think people are afraid that if they combine them, that it's going to lose the gravitas that it has standing alone. Am I, this speaking? Um, and I, and I agree. I'm actually surprised to see it down at six, but I'm not voting. My job is to facilitate. So, all right, so that is listing. Don't worry. I will, for those of you taking notes, this like all has a report with the votes. I'll print them out and send them to you. Okay, so now we're going to move on. All right, so we had a conversation a little bit about, go about transparency and it's almost like we saw this coming. But I think one of the things to talk about in, you know, future goings, as we start talking about committees and that kind of stuff, is how do we, and I think Ms. Gore, this is to your point earlier, is, you know, how can we involve the public more in the priorities for the city? So it's interesting that we were thinking very similar because I think part of instituting these priorities is also about the public taking ownership and being transparent with the public. And so there's two ways to think about this, right? There's a push of information and there's also a pull of information, right? So for example, the city of Richmond, I think every other year does a survey out to the residents that says, what are your priorities? And then they build their council priorities based on what they're hearing from the residents. I don't know what you guys do, if anything, but that could be something that we could potentially put here as an activity for engaging the public more effectively. One of the things we, I think, talked about earlier is, you know, making sure the finance committees are more public and more available and, you know, those kinds of ideas. So I think let's start brainstorming. What do we want to do? What are some ideas for engaging the public more effectively? Yeah, like we're going to mentee. Go ahead and go ahead and add. I think this is our last big mentee. Mr. Harris, Ms. Denton, as you think of things, just shout them out.
I have, I'm making myself available to the public by phone, by email or text. Making myself available to the public.
Got it?
I like. I like doing a survey once a year.
What was that, once a year? I'm sorry, I had trouble hearing you.
A survey, doing a survey.
Surveys, okay. Let me give us a couple of minutes so people can think through this. If you have any other ideas, shout them out. Okay, I put up. Are you guys adding that? That's a good idea. Whoever just threw that up there. Okay. Oops, I put order meetings on here twice. Oh, well. Um, refer citizens to the correct council member for assistance. What does that mean? Is it just like your award? Okay. So you're saying like someone in like starting to pick you guys like Pelham District goes to you. Okay. I can't hear enough at all. Yeah, I'm sure you didn't. I'm sure.
You got this. I still gave off. Just like this simple. Running like, no, I'm running in the middle of this law and I'm writing my attention stuff.
So I had to get this presentation and Heather. Yeah.
It's okay, some people shouted out and I participated for them. I just, I don't like that we can't see all of them when you present, so I just wanted to. All right, here we go. So we had finance committee meetings, making yourself available to the public. Refer citizens to the correct council member, participatory budgeting, town halls to get citizen input on the budget, surveys, booklet that includes city progress, ward meetings, twice because I accidentally ended it. Um, add in strategic, strategic plan, updates to council agenda, which is a good one. Directors communicate to council about ward projects beforehand and include when engaging public. Community budget meetings, ward meetings, survey, public finance meetings, community engagement, thanks. Quarterly meetings, invite church congregations, social media streams, open financial committees, town hall meetings, ward meetings, participatory budget sessions, survey, refer citizens to council, town halls, ward, church sessions. All right, I think that's a good list. Does anyone have anything further to add? Okay, any ideas? Okay, I'll add it. Is it government day? Okay. All right, everything has been added. Is there anything here that pops out to everyone is like, like, for example, one of the things that popped out to me is in the, having a strategic plan update in your open public meetings. Is there anything else that popped out to anyone else? That we should, we should prioritize? And you know what? Since I know you're having, you know, you probably can't read it all either. Hold on, stop, go away. Sorry, hang on. I can't get to things because this thing is, go away. Hang on. Here we go. All right, so here's the list again. Just anything that pops out as something that you guys want to focus on? Yes, all of these. I don't want to do a whole ranking activity because there's too many. I just was, is there anything that someone said, oh, that's a great idea. We should really do that. Maybe having open budget sessions?
I like directors to communicate to council about projects.
I like the idea, yeah, that I have a vote here, but I really like the idea of the strategic. It was, it didn't. Fade away. Yes, that's great. Very reasonable idea. She's saying when we did, we added that, we told staff that I Okay, so like, for example, when we Okay, so these are three, I think, very reasonable things. That's not too much to bite off for everyone. Is there some buy-in? For those of you on the phone. Um, we added like as target items for for sort of three things that jumped out. One was open budget sessions. Two was directors communicating about projects beforehand. And three was making sure that when you guys have your open council meetings, that we're tagging and updating on strategic priorities. Did you guys hear me?
All right.
All right.
All right. I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'm not asking anything. I'm just informing because I wrote them down on a piece of paper that you guys can't see.
Okay, okay.
What'd you say? Oh, you're not sure about the last one or you're not sure what I was saying? Yeah, I thought you said what you were asking. Okay.
I just, I heard you, so I'm, I'm okay. I don't even know if I was supposed to answer you in any way.
Oh, no, no, it was just more of an information because I wrote them down on my chicken scratch on the board and you guys aren't here to see it. All right, so the last piece in this also has to do, and I know we had the conversation about the finance committee, but this is the last. but this is the last pool of information from you guys for the short term. And that is, do you, can you think of ways to make council committees more effective? Now, I know we covered the finance committee a moment ago, and since I was asleep at the wheel, apparently. We apparently discussed talking about it in the open council session, the finance committee. So to have a separate meeting. Okay, so it would not be one of those Tuesday nights or would be like a before or after that open show.
We're going one work session. Well, but. And.
Increase. Increase. Increase communication of the committee. Uh, the committee actions to the rest of council.
Hey, hold on. Increase communication.
Increase immediate communication of committed.
Didn't we get his last piece of what?
Just a committee report.
Got it.
You didn't, didn't hear me?
I got you.
Okay.
All right, there we go. Hopefully you guys understand what I'm.
That's good. That's correct.
Okay, so how does that, what do we say?
But could the chairman of each committee send an email each month or every other month reporting what has, what they have accomplished?
Where, where you talk. Question I hear is count, city council.
Yes, we're council committees.
And the question is about city council standing committees, our committees, and the bit of ourself, not the public.
That's okay. Well, it's kind of covered in there about increasing communication of committee reports, which is why I didn't add it. Anyone have anything else to add? So do we need to vote on the finance committee or are we good? Okay, okay. Yeah, Bob?
Okay. We have a.
Russ, did you hear that? Because that's going to be you. So Russ, what Bob was just saying is when we get to municipal budgeting, ahead, send the council members, the GFOA guidelines and the other, any other guidelines you can so they know what to expect. Um, do you guys have a budgeting calendar that you follow?
Yeah. See managers who work. Way to leave all like leaving base time. Your thing about budget calendar, seeing man. He did semester. Or something.
So when does that come? It should be soon, yes? Okay, and then when does the budget have to be ratified by the end of May, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Midnight, June, well. Yes, but when is like fiscally responsible to adopt the budget? End of May, right? I know, but like, let's, 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 you know. Okay.
Yeah, I think people, but they, they were hurt. Yeah, that's in the. I feel. I feel the finance. Just again, they'll remember. On the signal that two other numbers should be before each of the finance commission. I would think in addition to our finances.
Yes. Yes. For those of you who can't hear online, Bob is suggesting that we go ahead and add not only just the director of finance and the city manager to the finance committee. He's also suggesting adding the commissioner of the revenue and the treasurer. They can't hear you. No, no, he's saying the two additional are the treasurer and the commissioner of the revenue. But there's no additional council members because yeah, theoretically, if you guys are going to open it up, the whole open session, it's everyone. The assessment is currently still closed. It's still the session, the person's open, right? Which is vacant. All right. All right, anything to add here? All right, this one was sort of put in there as a give me to discuss the finance committee, which we've already done, so we're okay. All right, so I think we are now moving on to culture and leadership expectations, so I'm going to pause.
Yeah. For this one, I want to get a sense of what the group wants to do. This may be something we want to go into like a closed session to discuss dealing with personnel and asking people, folks to, you know, leave in the room. Or, you know, to talk about it openly, or we can do it on our next city council close meeting again. Me personally, I think we can talk about it now, but I would like to see it still over closed session since it's a personnel.
Then.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Thanks for coming in today.
You know, yeah. And yeah. They weren't. Yeah. All right.
You guys read the note or the motion statement? Well, I don't say, but I don't have the actual one exactly. Yeah.
Both laws of the closing person to remain post section 2.2, that 371181, to discuss the set of personnel matter included more information upon the assignment and performance of the citizens' loyalty and employee of the city council. Um.
I apologize. Is there any discussion?
Okay, I'm here. Why can't we do this to make sure I don't screw it up? Stop recording or pause. Stop.